Hey guys, welcome all. So let's get started. Today what we are doing, going to do is we will be integrating whatever we have learnt till now. So we have learnt about Docker networks, we have learnt about Docker volumes, we have learnt about the challenges which we face when we start with Docker network. So in the class yesterday, I told that I will be creating a network. So let me just go ahead and start my work. So I'll open Pootie. And to go with Pootie, this is my region. Let me log in inside. This is my instance. Let me bring up my instance, whatever is running. If it is not running, I will just bring it up. Instance state, start the instance. Yeah, momma, you can post your question here. I'll take it from here if you have a question. So what I am going to do is I am going to run this machine and then the first thing what I will see is whether Docker is up and running or not. Once Docker is up and running, I will simply check what are the other things which I need and then I'll get started. So this is what we know at this point of time. So let me just wait for this machine to come up first. EC two user address, whatever IP address you get, you put it here. Change the font size to sixteen, okay? Change the SSH to auth, browse, go and take the key which you have and IP address. Open it up. Except. For Docker volume, can I see that there are two different syntax minus v or minus v? There are both use bind mounts and named volume. No, no, you have to revisit the class which we did on Docker volume and bind mount. In general day-to-day language, you can say that both are volumes, but there is a difference. If you remember the class which I took on volumes, I told you that if I talk about Docker volume. Docker volume. I have two varieties and I told you I have bind mount and I have volume. Now if you use volume, your this particular Docker area is fixed. You cannot change this location always and always the data will sit here. But suppose I want to take up a backup in a different machine, then you will be using this bind mount. So this is the major difference between Docker volume and Docker bind mount. So I told you that if I am using this thing. So if I use mount as my option, I can use, I can define my source and target. You tell which is your source. You tell what is your target. So that can be defined. But when you go to Docker volume, this kind of location is fixed. You don't have an option to define your source and target. So this is what I told you the other day. Now, what I am going to do is I am going to get started for today. No, that's okay man. Even if the syntax wise they are putting it like that, there is no worries. But at the end of the day, that's the major difference. You cannot go ahead and customize that. The course will help me to get started. Yes, definitely check. It will definitely get you started. In fact, more than getting started. So what I am going to do is I told that I have something called Docker network. And when I use a Docker network, suppose this is my network, I can put a instance here and then put a instance here. Now I want that they should talk to each other. So then I put them into one single network. And I do all kind of setup which is needed. But there can be a scenario where I did all the network setup. But after that, this container only crashed. It means the same thing I have to do again. And this can be very tedious because if I talk about the network setup, it is not like one single command and the network setup is done. There are many ifs and buts when I have to do a Docker network setup and then put the containers inside that. I have to manage port, I have to manage IP address. So there is many a work which has to be done. Now to handle that problem, what Docker says is don't do all these things. Use Docker composit. Now the question can be asked, what is Docker compost? Now in real-time world, okay? Can you run a container single-handedly? Means only container, you are not running anything. And in that container, you have only one application. So if you go and talk about this scenario, this is very unlikely that there will be only one image and you will be running only that image. So let me open it here. So generally, when you see a website around yourself, let me say Uber, okay? Let me say some gaming application, let me say some some online web application or online e-commerce application. So there will be various small, small web services. There will be a front end, there will be a back end and all these components will work together, okay? Together they will work or they will not work. That's how they work. So let me say I am talking about amazon.com. Now amazon.com will have a front end, it will have a middle wear and then it will have a back end. Okay, so when you type your username and password immediately then and there that username goes to the background in the background, their database, the username and password is stored. It will check whether the username and password is correct or not. And if it is correct, it will allow you to login. So this is how a real-time environment works means you do not work with a single container, but you work with a set of containers. And these set of containers work as one single unit. Now even in my example today, I am going to do something like this. I will have some three containers and I will put all the three containers in one single network. Not only one single network, but I'll also make sure that these containers are working as one single unit. Now to make that thing happen, I can manually do it. And in the class yesterday, I did it. I put my network and then in the network I put instances and then I made the communication work. But that is not what production environment is looking for. Production environment is looking for a setup where I have ready-made solutions means the moment I do that, it works. So for that Docker comes with something called Docker compost. So if you see this carefully, here you will write something called Docker compost file. So there will be a Docker compost file where you will mention a version and then the services which you want to run together. So this is a Docker compost file where I have a DB layer, I have an application layer, I have a web layer. So there are three containers which I want to work together. Each container can be directly pulled from your Docker hub like MySQL. It's a direct one. So you put it from your container. Or you can customize it. So it's too much now. Okay, so you can either take a container directly. So this container they are taking directly from hub dot docker dot com MySQL and they are running it. Or you create a container for yourself by writing a Docker file. Here also you are writing a Docker file and you are creating a container for yourself. And then the good thing is that these three containers are working together in a same network with the help of Docker compost file. So this is exactly what I am trying to do. For my work also, I will write a YAML file and I will be using this YAML file to keep these three containers in one network, keep these three containers work together as one single unit. So this is my agenda or this is my work for today. Now, the first thing which I am going to do is I am going to go ahead and install Docker compost. So the first thing which you should also see is Docker compost. So if you write like this Docker compost, it because I have installed it, it is giving me all the commands which are available. But even you will be starting your work, definitely Docker compost will not be there. For me, it is there because I have done it in the morning class and I am using that only. It says so the so the YAML file will replace Docker file. I will say YAML file will redirect to Docker. So I'll show you, give me some time for this. So the first thing what you have to do is when you are starting your work. Just clear all these things. Come and say that from EC two user, I will become a root user. This sudo hyphen. Then you will say host name, give any name of your choice. Let me say Docker compost. Okay, and again sudo hyphen. Okay, so let's clear all these things and I am ready. The first thing which you will do, so if you type like this Docker compost, you will get an error. C O M P O S E. So you will get an error, but I am not getting an error because I have installed it. Now, how did you install this? So what you have to do is you have to come to GitHub. To my repo, you can fork this repo. Node.js. Okay, so this is the code which I have, okay? Here if you go to Docker compost, this is the first file which you see here. You will be, so if you want to fork it, you have to simply come here and click on this fork. That's it. It will get copied. So if you want this, click on Docker compost, come to this demo. And here, sorry, one step back. Here you will find this installation. So installation is nothing but it's a three-step activity. Now if you want a specific version, you can go like this, one point two two point zero is the specific version which you are talking about. In case you are looking for the latest version, run this piece of command. Okay, simply just come here and run this command like this. So it will download this particular software for you, whatever software you have. Okay, then it has downloaded to this location, user local win Docker compost. Now what I am going to do is I am going to give execute permission to this guy. So I'll say sudo ch mod plus X. Means give execute permission to this particular Docker compost. Now if you come here and say Docker compost minus minus help. You will be able to see all the commands. More or less the commands will be more or less, Gopi will answer it, give me some time. So more or less these commands are same like what you you what you have been using in Docker like Docker build, Docker create, Docker exec, Docker log, Docker pause. So most of the commands are same, most of the commands, not everything. And then if you use minus F, what does it mean? Minus P, then what does it mean? So all these things are mentioned here. I will just recommend you to read through this. Just mugging up will not help. So unless and until you practice, it will be of no use. So you can just run these commands like Docker compost, start, stop, but all the commands are self-explanatory. So now the second thing which I will also check is whether Docker is up and running or not. So Docker service Docker status is also what I want to check. Service Docker status. So I am seeing that it is up and running. So my work is done. Okay, I have Docker compost available, I have Docker available. Now how does this Docker compost work? So I just give me one minute. Okay, so how does this Docker compost work? So I can see there is a Docker compost YAML file and there are various services which is written. So in my example, I am going to do something similar to that. So I am going to run three applications. This one will be my database. The second one will be my node.js and the third one will be Nginx. So what will happen is any traffic which is coming from internet will come here. And I told you Nginx acts like a load distribution. It also acts like a reverse proxy. So N G I N X. So Nginx will allow the traffic to come inside if it's a genuine traffic. Then this traffic will fall all the way, it will go here. Here my node.js application will run. Node.js application will run from node.js, I will connect to my database which will be Mongo. So Mongo is again a database. And once everything is correct, it will send the response back. Back and the user will get a response. So any application which you see around, okay, some or the other way, this is how it is implemented. And the very important thing here is all of them are the same network. Now, if I have to do this manually, it will take a good amount of time. But I am not going to do it manually, rather I am going to do it via Docker compost. So the first thing is I need to write a Docker compost file, a file where I have container one. Container two. Container three. Anybody having any questions here? I just unmute everyone. Anybody who has any questions, please go ahead. If you understand this, then rest all our commands. But the concept should be clear. What we are trying to do and how it works.
How many containers will support for Docker compost?
Support for Docker compost means?
How many containers can be like three, four, ten?
It will depend on your machine. Let me say you are using a machine which is one GB RAM and one core CPU. So it may support some five to ten containers. But if you are using a machine, let me say it is like sixty-four GB RAM and two TB hard disk, then easily it will support some five hundred or thousand containers. So it totally depends on your machine size. If the machine is a big one, it will support a big amount. Machine is small, it will support a small size. So theoretically from Docker side, there is no upper limit to the number of containers which it can support.
So Nginx is the web server. Can we treat this in the picture?
In this picture, I will refer Nginx as a proxy server. Node.js is my front-end application or my web server and Mongo is my DB server.
Okay, and regarding this yesterday's network thing, so how is means like yesterday we added a network to the containers, means like container IPs there. So how this will be different from the network part?
It will be automatically taken care by Docker compost. Now as and when I start using tools, these management activities will be taken care by the tool. So I will not have to manually manage these containers. So Docker compost will take care of that. Okay.
Because we are giving just like instructions to the inner Docker compost file that okay, this container should be as a database and it will work and this container is it's like like instructions we are giving in that like YAML file.
Yes.
And then it is creating complete environment to us like Docker environment, like whatever we require, right?
Yes. So in the YAML file, you are executing, right? You give a set of instructions. Like I want this image, I want this custom image from here. So all these things, this is my Docker file, take it from here. So all the instructions you give in your YAML file, the Docker compost YAML file and from there it will take everything and it will run everything.
Okay, got it. Like previous, is it like a host method we are using in the like networking previous concept we as you said, it's
No, no, don't take it as host. It is not a host. It still remains to be a bridge network only. But the thing is this time you are not manually managing anything. It is completely being managed by my Docker compost too.
Okay.
So Vikas, I have one question. So it includes whatever we performed all the task like creation of volumes, creation of Docker, we are running containers. So it includes network volumes, everything in YAML file and then we are executing.
Correct, correct? Yes. So in the YAML file, I will write everything, whatever you need, you write in the YAML file. While bringing that YAML file or while running that YAML file, each and every activity will be taken care of.
Okay, so whatever we did in the first, so we are going to automate.
Yes, whatever you have done till now, like creating a volume manually, then creating a network manually, putting the containers manually, managing the containers manually. You will now manage and put everything in one single file called Docker compost file and automatically it will be put in one single network.
Okay, it's clear. Thank you.
Yeah. Now, Mathi, there is a question here which says that I am still not clear with the difference between a network and a compost. So I told in the beginning that when you talk about network, you create a network first of all. So there is a manual work involved. When you create a network, there is nothing inside, there is no container inside. So you go and put your container. Then you make container one and container two talk to each other because they are individual containers. Once that is done, okay, fine, my work is happening. But in future, if the container is gone, again you have to go and fix that problem. So when you are using a container and network and you are manually maintaining them, then you have to do all this work. But in my example, I am not going to do this manually. I told DevOps is all about automating the process. So I am trying to automate this by using Docker compost. So everything related to network, manual, container, network, volume, container management will now be taken care by my Docker compost file. Okay.
So, so just one more question. So you see, are we still going to write those Docker file like inside this?
You will still write those Docker files. You will still create the volume. You will still go ahead and create the network, but that will be a one-time activity. The management part will simply go to the Docker compost file. I'll just now show you that.
Okay, thanks.
Now please keep this thing in your mind so that you are aware what we are trying to do. So what I am going to do is, one second.
Okay, because I have a note like here like I mean like we are going to, we are going to deploy the three containers in this example, right? So what if like any of the container gets cached?
That will not happen. That's what the tool is supposed to do. The tool will take care of all these things. If one of the container is crashed, automatically it will bring up the container. So it will take care of all these things. And one very important thing is these three containers will now be treated as one unit. So if one container is gone, the others will be gone like that. So let me just show you that. I'll give you, I'll just show you that, give me some time for that. So this is the diagram which I have come up with and now this is what I am going to implement. So one thing which I can see here is all of them are in one network and there are three containers, okay? So let's implement this. Now to implement this. Now to implement this, the first thing what I am going to do is I am again going to my this Docker compost file and here I have the content in demo. I have this node compost YAML. So this is the one which I should be knowing what is this. Now, in many a projects, I am not saying hundred percent, in many a projects, this will be written by the developer. If the team is big, generally the developers will write and give it to you. But if the team is small, then probably you will be asked to write it. So if you go for an interview, just practice writing these things before you go for it. So let me take this and try to explain you what we have written here. So let me just come here. You know, Pat plus plus. So it's a YAML file. So let me put it as YAML. Now, version, you can put any version of your choice, three point five, two point one, nine point eight, any version is okay. It is for you to understand how many times it has been changed. Then the most important thing is I am running three services here. These are my three services, which is nothing but my node.js application, MongoDB application and Nginx application. On top of that, I am running all three of them into a network which I have named it as example hyphen net and it is the external network because I am saying external network two means I have to create it. So the first thing what I am going to do is I am going to create a network called example hyphen net and I will be using it, okay? So again, the same thing, if I come here and say Docker network ls, you will see I already have this network, but just to make sure that everything is fresh, I am going to remove it and create it again. Docker network, so it comes from my morning class, okay? So Docker network are now if I say Docker network ls, I can see there is, this is also if you want, you can delete anyhow. So as of now, I can see there is a bridge network, there is a host network, there is a none network and there is a network which I yesterday created. So I am going to create a new network now. So I will say Docker network create. And you give any name of your choice. Let me say I am going to give a name as example hyphen net. Again, any name is okay. Give your commit ID, you can go here and say Docker network ls and you will see this example hyphen net. If you go here and say Docker network. Docker network inspect. And this network ID or the name, you will see as of now, this is the IP range. But there are no containers which are running inside. Now this is important as
Because I have a question, like by default you are creating a bridge network, right?
Yes.
So if you want to create other networks, so do we have any commands?
You have to mention minus minus type and you have to mention the type.
So because like because the same example will work with the another network driver, probably like since like we are creating the host, right? So sorry, bridge one. So like, can we create the network with the host and I mean execute the same demo?
Yes, yes, you can do man. All these will be acceptable. Okay, all these are native to Docker means something which Docker already supports. So all these things will be supported. Okay. Yeah, let me complete this, then I will take a questions again. So I am going to clear this. So as of now, I have created a network and I see that there are no containers in this network. If I go here and say Docker PS minus A, I can see some containers which were running some eleven hours back means from the morning class. I am again going to delete them. Docker RM minus F. So container one, container two and container three. Now if I come here and say Docker PS minus A, I have a clean slate, nothing is there. Docker images. And here also I have something, let me just delete them. Docker RM minus F, sorry, RM I. Give the image ID one. One. Two. Three. Four. Clear out everything. Docker images. So I don't have any image. Docker PS minus A. I don't have any container. Okay, I have one network which I have just now shown you. Docker network ls and I have also shown you that inside this network, nothing is running. So no container is running as of now. So this is my primary setup. Now what I am going to do is I am going to see in my Docker compost file. So I just now opened my Docker compost file. I told the version can be anything. Then you can go ahead and create a network, external network of your choice and give any name of your choice. Done. Now I am going to spin three containers, container one, container two, container three. Now as per this diagram, let me start from here, Mongo, which is a database. The sequence doesn't matter, you write in any sequence you want. So here I am saying I am going to create a container called, the container name is Mongo. These are the set of instructions. You don't have to change much, let the template be as it is, only make changes as per your requirement, like container name, change whatever you want to. But it's a key value pair, key, no space, colon, then space and then whatever value you want to do. So it always be like that only. So here I am saying container name is Mongo. From hub dot docker dot com, I am pulling an image called Mongo. I have not mentioned anything. So it will automatically take the latest image from Mongo, okay? Then I am saying I am going to use volumes, okay? So minus B flag, you don't write like minus V. We say volumes and I am saying whatever data is stored inside the container at this location, outside you replicate it in my data folder. Okay, so I am kind of replicating the data which is inside the container to outside the container. And this can be done by a command volumes colon. And this can be done by a command volumes colon and then hyphen and then whatever you want to say. You also want to expose it to external port. So you can say two seven zero one seven is the default port for Mongo. So I've just exposed it to the external port and I'm mentioning exclusively here that you go ahead and spin up this in the network. Which is example hyphen net, which I have already created here. So when I run this, the first activity which will be done is a Docker container will be created with the name as Mongo. The second, it will pull the latest image from hub dot docker dot com. Third, it would create a volume. Which will keep the backup of my data in dot data folder always. Then it will expose port number two seven zero one seven, which is the default port. If you want a different port, you can put it there and. It will put it in the network example hyphen net. So this is my first stuff done. Then the second thing is I'm looking for node. Now node is not an image which I'm going to directly use. I am going to use this guy in a customized manner. Okay? So if you see this thing, I directly told container name and the image. But here I'm not saying something like this. I'm saying I'm going to build a Node.js app. The build, okay, you remember Docker build command we used to create to build our images. So I'm saying I'm going to use build, the context is dot backslash node Docker app. What does this mean? It means whatever I'm trying to build, it is present inside this folder. So if you come back here. You come back here. You will see there is a node Docker underscore app folder. Now inside this app folder, if you go, you will find many a things and the most important thing for me is Docker file. So this Node.js app which I'm creating, it is not a app which is directly available over the internet. This is my customized node doc node app. Okay? As per my company's requirement, I'm creating this. So you are not a Node.js developer, so I'm not expecting you to write the code. In fact, in the company also, you will not be expected to write the code. So if there are companies working on Node.js, there will be a Node.js developer who will write the code. So you are here to learn Docker, not here to learn Node.js, Mongo and all those things. So don't get worried. There will be a developer, definitely, hundred percent. All the companies know. So I will have a Node.js developer. What he will do is, he will say that I'm going to build an image. The context is the code, the code is present inside this folder and inside this folder, there is a Docker file with the name as Docker file. So this is what I'm looking at. So this is my. Docker Compost. At the same location, I have Docker app, node, node Docker app. Inside this, I have a Docker file with a name as Docker file. And now in this Docker file, whatever commands are there, that will get executed. So you know how it works. So when I write a Docker file, I will have a base image. So I can take any base image, node fourteen, node latest, whatever you want, you take it. I'm creating a work directory or a working directory inside the container. So this is my inside the container. Now to, for node to work, there will be some package required. So in my local or in my. Location, I have package dot JSON. You can see package dot JSON. So in the Docker file, it says, copy this package dot JSON to my user directory or the directory which is inside the container, this guy. Okay? Then it says to NPM install. So you do write yum install Java like that. It is NPM install means install Node.js application. Once that is done, whatever files you see here in my local, copy everything to the folder, which is this, inside the container. Expose the port number four times eight and run the command node app JS. So this will run my Node.js application. App dot JS is my. App JS or my Node.js application. So this is my basically. Why this? So this basically it says go to routes and there is a post message, post that message. Come here, you see a routes, in the routes, there is a post and here. You're basically posting this message. You're running this piece of command, hello from Node.js using Node mon. So this is what we are trying to do. So. This. This Node.js app or this build section will point me to node Docker app. Inside node Docker app, I have a Docker file with a name as Docker file. It will tell me what has to be done. Once it is done, I will create a container with a name as node JS server. The hostname is also node JS server. Again, you give any name of your choice. The port at which it will run is four times eight, four times eight. And if you remember your this guy. Node or Docker distinct, you are exposing it at four times eight. So you are going to run at four times eight. And then network is this guy. This example underscore net. But there is one more important thing. I told that these three containers should run as one single unit. If one is gone, everything should be gone. So I am putting a clause here called depends on. It means when you go to create Node.js application, the first thing is a Mongo container should be up and running. If a Mongo container is up and running, then only Node.js will be created. And the moment Node.js will be created, both will be linked together. Okay? Similarly, the third application which I'm looking at is this Engineering application. So Engineering says build context is dot Engineering means. Here you'll find a folder. Here you'll find a folder with the name as Engineering. Click on this. In Engineering, you'll find a, you'll find a Docker file with the name as Docker file. The name of the container is Engineering. The hostname is also Engineering. And it is running at port number eight zero and it will depend on Node.js. And it will work under the network example dot net. So if you see carefully, I have passed a set of instructions. And in this set of instructions, I'm clearly mentioning that there is one network, one external network in which you have to run all these three containers. These three containers are interdependent. If you go to run this guy, it says this is dependent on Node.js. If you go to run Node.js, it sees it is dependent on MongoDB. Now, if you go and run MongoDB, it says it is dependent on the network. This is the port at which it will run. This is the volume which it is going to use. This is the image which it is going to use. This is the container name which it is going to use. So let me say this is created. Then it will go and try to create this Node.js. It will say context, go to node Docker app folder. There you will find a Docker file with this name, run a, create an image and run a container out of that. Expose it at force four times eight port number and then. This will be taken care. Then finally, Engineering will come and Engineering also go to Engineering folder. Take the Docker file from there and make a container out of it and expose it at port eight zero. So this is what this piece of code will be doing. Now, the first day when I start writing this, it will haunt me. It is very complex. I don't know what it is. But remember the template in your mind, okay? Nobody has this thing by heart, like they will come and start writing, not like that. Gradually you will start learning. It's a key value pair. It's a Yaml file. So slowly you will learn. But at this point of time, I want you to understand the template, understand the flow and then gradually start practicing. Okay? And then you will clearly understand what is what. As of now, I am very clear with the flow that this is what is going to happen. So now what I will do is I'll try to, it is like A, B, C, D, R correct. Step A then step B then step C and then all are related to each other. So now what I'm going to do is I'm going to take this piece of code and I'm going to put it in my local machine because I'm going to run everything from here. So if I come here and say ls minus L, I have these things. Let me delete this, okay? RM minus RF. Yeah. So as of now, I don't have anything. Now I want to clone this, this whatever code I have in GitHub, I want to clone this. So come here, code and copy this URL HTTPS and this URL. The only thing is you should have Git installed. So just come here and say git minus minus version. If Git is installed, it will show you. If not installed, just come here and say yum install git minus Y. And Git will be installed. For me, it is saying nothing to do because it is already there. Once this code you have copied, this URL you have copied, come here and say git clone means clone the code. And this URL. So it is cloning Node.js. Then that code is getting copied here. Though I don't need everything, but I copied everything so that. So if I do ls minus L, I will see my Node.js. So inside Node.js. Sorry. I'll say CD, Node.js. Inside Node.js, I'll go to Docker Compost. Inside Docker Compost, I'll go to demo. I'll go to Docker Compost. Inside Docker Compost, I have demo. And in demo and inside that I have this entire thing. Docker Compost Yaml file, the Engineering file and the Docker com Docker. No Docker app file. Just run now. Docker Compost should run from here only. Like when you say a Docker build, you say where the path is, right? Dot. Similarly, when you're running Docker Compost, you should run from here only. If you run from something somewhere else, no, it will give you error. Docker. Compost up, if you try to like that, it will just say it is not for something like this. So wherever you have this. Thing, this installation. There only, wherever you have this Docker Compost Yaml file, from there only you run. What you will do? Docker. Compost and just say up. What it will do? It started with Mongo pulling and it's time to pull the image of Mongo. Step number one. Just see what is happening, okay? Seven by ten steps running. Okay, so it's building the image. See here, uh, was very quick. It's very quick anyhow. Just come here. It says Mongo pull means it is pulling the image of Mongo. It was done in two point one eight seconds. Then demo Engineering. Internal, so it is time to create demo Engineering image from the Docker file. But when it goes, it will find. Demo, Node.js app has to be built. So like this, it is just doing the transfer, okay? Then running three by one. So it says Mongo, now see carefully, Mongo. Node.js server and Engineering. When they are created, they are created simultaneously. Okay? And when they are running, attaching to Mongo Engineering Node.js server. All the three are running at the same network. If you keep going down, these are logs, if you want, you can read it. And here it says Node.js server is running on port. Three thousand. So it is a message which I had given here. So that message got printed. This is node app. Go to this app dot JS. This is the port which we have done. This is the message which is running. Okay? Node.js service running on port. So this is three thousand. So it is showing three thousand here. So this is three thousand and then. Mongo is initiated. Somewhere you will find Mongo is running. Okay? And finally you will see this Engineering is running. So basically what I'm trying to show you here is. All the three are connected together, working on the same network and they are working together. Now it is blocked. So I cannot do anything, but I will duplicate this and try to see what has actually happened. Let me become a root user. And now if I come here and say Docker PS minus A. I will see three containers are running. So I can see three containers are running and they are exposed accordingly. Right? So if I go to this container Mongo and I want to see what's there. So it is running at two seven zero one seven, right? So let me try to see it. So this is my EC2 instance. This is my IP address. Two seven zero one seven. It looks like you're trying to access MongoDB over HTTP on the native driver port. So this is just a message that your MongoDB is running. One very important thing which I have already done, you must do, go to your security, go to your security group. And make sure that these ports are open, whatever I'm showing you. See, two seven zero one seven, it should be open for IPv4 anywhere from IPv4. Port triple eight open. So this port must be open. If it is not open, it will not work. Okay? Now, four times eight, will it work? It will not work because Engineering will not allow any traffic to come here directly. So no traffic will come here directly. But if I run at Engineering, so Engineering, if you remember, I've exposed it at port number eighty. See here, you're getting this message. Hello from Node.js using Node mon. So. I am seeing that these things which I was trying to achieve has been achieved. First, my Engineering container is receiving the traffic from the internet. It is not allowing the traffic directly to reach Node.js application. Engineering is taking the traffic, putting it in Node.js, finally getting touch Mongo and receiving the response back. Here I have not stopped anything. So it is showing me that the DB can be accessed. But in real time scenario, you don't expose your DB also. So you don't open the port number two seven zero one seven, okay? Let not exposed. But I can see my three containers are working together and the good thing is. And the good thing is if I do a control C, see here, they will stop. Engineering stopping. I did control C. I did not say stop this or stop that. First Engineering will stop. Then you will see the other one will stop. Node.js is stopping and then you will see this. Third one will stop. So it is saying gracefully stopping and all the three have stopped. Now you can come here and say Docker. Compost down. Down means remove all these applications. So now all of them got removed. So in this class, this is what I was trying to achieve. I was trying to put them as one single unit, one container so that they work together. They perform together and I don't have to deal with any network related things. Now I'll open it for questions. Anyone has any, please go ahead. I will share this link with all of you so that you can practice. Practice is the key. The commands may look very haunting at this initial stage. But as soon as you start your work, you see every now and then, then you will feel very comfortable and you can.
Sir, it's a three containers working, running with one network, right? Not one container.
It's not one container. It is three containers. I just now showed you.
Yeah, okay.
Three containers. These are three different containers.
No, no, but just now you pronounced that to one container. That's why I got.
Three containers running as one container, once.
Yeah.
Because this will be coming through Jenkins, right? In real time.
Yes, I will show you all these things. But as I, as many of you will be aware that in real world, we are not actually using these things. We will be using Kubernetes. And I'll show you Kubernetes is much more powerful than all these things. Okay? So when I start.
Uh, this Docker container will be there, right?
Docker container will be there, but these things will be not there. Tomorrow I'll be teaching you swarm. It will look very good. But then when I start Kubernetes, I'll tell you why these things are lagging behind.
Okay, okay.
See, after learning all these things, you can apply for a DevOps engineer role. If developer writes Docker Compost, then what is the role of a DevOps engineer? You create a pipeline, man. You create a pipeline, you make it run and developer, developer is writing, it means it is not like every now and then he will write and give it to you. It is like only one time he will give it to you. Going forward, if there are changes, if there are maintenance, you will have to do those maintenance.
Because can you explain this Docker files in these two Node.js and?
This is same, no? What we did.
Yeah, yeah. I just I want to go to and just check you when. So if I go to. Node.js and another.
This Docker file, if you see, they, they are like four, five commands here. So first is from command. So from is your base image. Whatever base image you want, you take it.
Yes, up to this I understood and this copy command, copy.
Copy me. In my local, I have these things. Pick is package dot JSON, app dot JS, view, route. I want to copy all these things inside the container because my Node.js applicant, application is running inside the container. So the code has to be copied. I told you when I talk about Docker container, I will copy the libraries. I'll copy the executables. I'll copy the code. I will copy everything inside my container. So that is exactly what we are doing here. First time.
You're copying to in this path in the container.
This path is inside the container.
And down, another copy is there, that is for, uh, dot slash.
No, wait. See here, when you copy this guy, you're only copying package dot JSON. Then you're doing an NPM install means you're installing. Then you are doing an NPM install means you are installing node. After node is installed, then you are moving everything because if you install or if you move this before only, then they will not be able to expand or they will not be able to run.
Okay, I got it. After installing, we will get some files, that way should be.
Based on that, you are moving them and then you are exposing it and finally you are running your application by the command as node app dot JS.
Okay, I got it.
And in this Docker file, you are simply copying the content, nothing extra is here.
Yeah, yeah, because I have one doubt.
We are creating like from this file, we are creating a container, Docker image, Docker file to image and then container, right?
Yes.
In the instructions.
Yes.
So I just want to understand like benefits of Docker Compose. So we are grouping all right, different containers in one network. So any other benefits?
Apart from that, you don't have to manage them manually. Second, you don't have to manage any networking part manually. If one goes down, the others will automatically stop working. So my requirement is either three of them or four of them should work together or none of them should work. So anywhere you have any such requirement, it will work.
So suppose my Node, Node JS app went down. Example, so it will not work entire thing, right? Within the network.
See.
So how I can recover my application?
Then you have to fix the application. That's why Kubernetes will come. That is why Kubernetes is coming because manually, see, we are going step by step. See, first day I taught you that there is Docker hub, everything is there. Second day I taught you that no, in Docker hub, everything is not there. You have to do something by yourself by writing a custom. Docker file. Now I taught you um. Networks, then I told you, okay, network also has a small problem. Then I showed you Docker Compose. Tomorrow I will show you Docker swarm. When all these things are done, I will tell you the drawbacks which are there and then how Kubernetes is handling all these things.
Okay, see for now like we are within the network and we are managing all containers. So if we have a network issues, then it's a problem. That's what I understood. So now next class, how we can tackle or manage networks? Is that correct?
No, no, network is managed. I am not going into man, Docker networks again. I am showing you there is a network and inside then them where I put my containers, I have to manually manage it. Now what I am doing is the containers, the interdependency of the containers and the network, I am putting everything together. So either everything should work together as a one single unit or nothing should work. That is my current requirement.
Okay, so.
Again I will come here. See, I will just explain.
Here my question is like we have production. So if our Node JS is going down, it's a problem, right?
Yes, you have to manually fix it. I am saying it is manually to be fixed.
Manually, okay. So for now, it's manually.
Yes, it is manually.
Okay, it's clear. Thank you.
See, Docker is just a founding stone. It is just a base which is required. Because let me say if I go with Kubernetes, suppose. Kubernetes, okay. In Kubernetes, I have something called. Deployment, deployment. So if I work with this deployment, I need an image. Okay, it's not like without image I cannot work, but I need a container here and for this I am doing all these things, okay. There will be ten other things which will come, but as of now, just take it like this. Docker is a founding stone for Kubernetes. That's it. Take it like that. Hey, where can we check the logs of the, for the Docker? You can use this command. Docker log and suppose you are looking for NGINX. So logs. No such container, well. Oh, I have just brought my container down. Yes, minus A. So there are no containers. But in case you want to see the logs, this is the comment.
So we can check container level by using this come.
Yes.
Command. Okay, so we have NGX, we have DP, we have any other applications. So we can check it's a container level, okay.
So we can go inside the container also, we can check the logs, right?
In, maybe, in, inside the container, if you want to go, that command is different. Docker exec minus ID, whatever is the container ID and then bin bash. Okay, and then you have go to CD logs and find it. But the problem is if the container is stopped state, this will not work. Okay, so this one will be the better option in the, in, assume that the container died due to some reason, then you can check the logs, why it died.
Okay. That's after executing the script, a Docker Compose up and then we did Ctrl C, it was stopped, right?
Yes, that's because I have run it in attach mode. That's why my screen was off. That's why I did a Ctrl C.
Okay, I got.
Hyphen. So log, log is mainly used for what?
Log means what has happened in the background. Nobody told me. I am telling that the container is running. But if you want to check what actually has happened, you will go and see the logs.
It's kind of history.
Yes, kind of a history. In the background, what has happened, it will show you.
Because the, what will be the command for the Docker Compose of video hyphen D is something we need to hear.
Mine, I think it is attach, just check once, Docker. Don't ask commands, man, I don't remember them. In fact, nobody remembers them.
Yes.
You will have to run it in attachment. There will be some minus D or minus A, something like this. Or you can put it like this. Docker Compose in detach mode. Minus D.
A minus D.
Docker Compose up, that's detachment. Fine, now please practice. The practice will be the only key else there will be a lot.
So actually I have one question. Interview point of view, so what kind of questions?
I, I will share the question answers. Give me some time. The interview questions will see. Everything will go as per the sequence. If you just break the sequence, you will not be able to understand. Trust me, you will not be able to understand. I will share the questions with you. I don't have any problems. But most of the times, the interview questions will be scenario based. The question will be, I have a container which is stopped. I don't know why it has stopped. Can you help me how to debug it? I will tell you how to work on all these things. So ninety, ninety nine percent of the questions will be scenario based. I have this problem. How can you help me? And no questionnaire, I can share some ten thousand questions with you, okay. But no questionnaire will be helpful unless and until you practice them. If you practice them, then only you will remember. Okay, if you read hundred documents, you will not remember, trust me.
Because I have one.
I saw because, right?
Come on, go one more.
Can, can we get this recordings? Because as.
Yes.
Attend the class.
Yes, so you please get in touch with your coordinator. He should give you the recordings.
Okay, I have sent mail to the him, a message to the him, just I am waiting for the recordings.
Okay, fine.
Okay, and because like regarding this uh, part you have told me regarding the Compose thing. So uh, the scaling and the clustering part will that covers in Kubernetes and.
It will go in Kubernetes. Here we don't do much. Scaling, scaling, load balancing, everything will come in Kubernetes. Okay. Fine guys, see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks because.
And team. And team, like if you have any questions or something, just post in the WhatsApp chat, that will be helpful for others even like to debug the things.